Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Thursday, February twenty-second, council meeting of the community playmaker community of the year and home of the number one fire department in the nation and the most recognized fire station in the world. Please stand and join me in the reciting the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen.
Here.
Mr. Harper.
Here.
Mr. Miskin.
Here.
Mayor Abu Asali.
Here.
Ms. Menser. Mr. Brandt.
Here.
Mr. Sterned.
Here.
Okay, tonight we have one of our favorite things to do, oath of office for new firefighters, so. Oh, I'm sorry, we do have a moment of silence first, forgot that. Got, was too excited about getting to the oath. Okay, thank you. And now we'll get to the oath ceremony and Chief Fagan come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and Marion. It's my pleasure to introduce Kayden Michael as Marion's newest firefighter and to Hunter M. and with his oath of office along with the pending of his firefighter badge this evening. Firefighter Michael grew up in the area, graduated from Lenmar High School and completed coursework at Kirkwood Community College to prepare him for service in Marion. He joined the department in November of 2023 and is currently assigned to shift one at Station One under Lieutenant Zach Bruce. Firefighter Michael has quickly demonstrated that he's a team player, committed to service, and ready to help take great care of his community. Kayden, we're proud to have you on our team. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mayor Nick Abu Asali for the firefighter's oath. Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I ask firefighter Michael's designee to come forward to pin his firefighter badge. Kayden, as they come forward, please share with us who is here with you, family and friends. Well, Kayden, this is a great night for you. Wish you the best in your career. And again, we're proud to have you on our team, man. We're gonna take a couple more pictures and then we'll take some more outside, okay? All right, join me in round of applause again. Thanks, everyone.
Welcome to Team Marion, Kayden. Okay, before we proceed. Let's give people a minute here to. Okay, we'll proceed with the meeting at this time, and I would like to just review the public forum rules that will apply to the meeting. There is an initial public forum at the beginning of the meeting, which is a time for comments from the public related to any agenda items not associated with the public hearing. The second public forum at the end of the meeting is for any comment from the public. Please understand that no action will be taken on comments made due to open meeting laws at that, with regard to that public forum. And then there is also a time for public comments during the public hearings on those specific topics. The rules of procedure for the public comments are, please complete a yellow comment card found at the end of the staff table and turn it into the city clerk when you come forward to speak. Please do not approach the dais, but submit any materials you have directly to the city clerk. Once called forward, please step up to the podium and you are encouraged to state your name and any group affiliation, if any. Speakers should limit their comments to five minutes. Speakers should be respectful of all people and limit their comments to the direct item or issue that they have and not disparage other people. Speakers should refrain from making any verbal attacks on anyone. Speakers should not conduct, conduct themselves or speak in a manner that is eminently threatening to any person or that incites violence or that is obscene. People should avoid repeating comments or points that have been previously shared and failure, failure to adhere to these guidelines or engaging in disruptive behavior may result in removal from the meeting. Thank you. This time we have a couple presentations. First one is an update on the C-Mar Trail gateway feature.
Yes, so I know this is a very popular topic. So this is our gateway pedestrian bridge as you come in Marion Boulevard, Seventh Avenue. So obviously, the trail's there. So what I want to do is bring Kara in and talk about some of the components that she's going to now do with the vertical that are gonna go on there. And then there's some slight deviations from what we're calling the concept that was out in the public. So that's what the public saw versus what she has and what we're gonna show on some of the slides here just to level set and make sure everyone's under the same impression as we move forward with this, so.
And to confuse things even more, I brought the original model from almost five years ago.
So, high level, these are the shop drawings that you can see on the plans, you can see. So what we're talking about is the vertical component that sits on the pier that's already there. And basically, the original, again, this is concept, so that back when we were designing the bridge, you can see the thickness of these was pretty apparent. But again, this was just a concept versus you can see the thickness here is much different. So we just wanted to make sure everyone understood that it's not gonna take away what you see here. And then as the trail user, as you know, that that bridge curves. So you're still gonna see the colors. So we're making it narrow here so that it actually meets the bolts that are there and meets with the structure that's there. So it's less wind loading, should withstand better. So we don't see any reasons why not to proceed with this, but we wanna make sure everyone's on a level playing field. So we brought the expert in.
Yeah, because that, that original.
Kara, would you please step up to the microphone? The meeting's recorded, so.
Yeah, sorry, everyone. That original depth was purely aesthetic. It was like three feet. It was mathematically based on width and height. And this is why I chose Media Quest to fabricate this, because they understand things like wind shear and loads and how to find the center of gravity of a thing. So their, their request is to just get our center of mass centered over the bolts and it actually changes our proportions closer to the original model. And I'm sure everyone is just like, these all look the same. But it's, it's all in just dimensions that we've tweaked and changed around a little bit. Does anyone have questions?
Well, so how deep is the pier now? I can't quite read it on the.
It is one foot four, so sixteen inches. It's actually, I think it's, like aesthetically, I think it's gonna be better. And I think it's, I, this just occurred to me, like as someone who likes to climb things, probably less climbing on because it's gonna look a lot more dangerous to try to monkey up the side, so.
Kara, is fabrication in process now?
They are, we're going back and forth with some minutia of where to locate an electrical box, but it is essentially moving forward. Like this, there's an electrical box with some conduit that is like here and to get the tower to sit, Media Quest wants to move it over here. And we just wanna make sure everyone's signed off on that. So yes, it's moving forward. We're waiting, we're waiting for conversations to happen.
Okay, but there hasn't been any fabrication done?
Oh, no, 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 because my, in my initial push to just move forward with the contract, what I wanted to do was ensure that Media Quest could purchase or at least make purchase agreements for materials at prices at that time so that if we did have cost escalations or shortages that it wouldn't affect the project six months down the road. So as far as I know, everything's procured and it's moving forward. And this, I mean, these are very large, so they're gonna take up most of their shop. So I'm just waiting for a call from them to say, okay, everything's fallen, fallen into place, pack your snacks, let's go. Because I will be in the shop with them. I'll be rolling all the, all the arcs. And then, you know, working on whatever.
Once it starts, what's the estimated time for completion?
Probably six weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what we had speculated about a year ago.
Okay, that's good to know. I mean, we get these questions, people ask, you know, and so it's good to have that information.
Yeah, and, and I'll be in the shop fabricating with them, so I can, I mean, I can update everyone.
And is there a rough estimate of timeline or expected date that it's gonna be completed?
Yeah, we had, I think, in the fall, we had discussed shooting for spring install. So like after, like once we're in that part of spring, like April, May, we're like, we don't have to worry so much about rain days or mud or frost. So we are towards the end of Feb, so if we're starting to fabricate by mid-March, three weeks will be.
I mean, that gives people a good idea of.
Yeah, but like, but that's, that's also not a promise because I can't control, like, their labor flow and their project flow.
Understood, understood. But it could be sometime this summer.
It could be.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the key question I have is not for you, Kara, but for Mike, and is that, do we have approval yet to install these?
Yeah, so we have actually spoke with Iowa DOT and FHWA, and at this point, it's in accountings purview, and so they said proceed. So we actually have documentation, we can proceed.
Oh, we do have. That's fantastic, because I had, I was concerned that the federal government was gonna delay this, this magnificent project. So looking forward, now I'm a lot more excited about it, Kara, because I was gonna say, where are we gonna store these big boys?
Right.
Because I'm glad to hear that.
I, I think we're gonna store them at your house.
Yeah, sure.
I think that's what Diane and I.
Yeah, I got a big building out back. So that's good.
So when the, when the installation actually happens, how long will that take? Just wondering for trail closure purpose.
Oh, yeah, right on. Um, I would, I have no idea. I'm gonna bet a couple days, maybe, or maybe a day, because it, what we should be able to do is just close one side of the street, lift it up with a truck and drop it on the bolts, secure it temporarily, bolt everything down under the bridge to the other side, set it, move the cones, so. But like, this is way bigger than stuff I install, so I can't, I don't wanna say, oh, well, we haven't done in two hours. When it's like, no, it's gonna take a couple days.
I wondered, so.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Well, so Steve asked the question that I had in the back of my mind, that we had full clearance, which is good.
Yes.
And that's in writing.
Yes.
That really, just a comment, maybe this is more for Mike, you know, let me, give me a little heads up, you know, about installation date. I know somebody with a drone who wants to get video of that.
Anyone else? Do you have anything else to add, Kara or Mike?
Wishes do come true, you guys. I had hoped that this would get installed before I turned to fifty, and I think it's really gonna happen.
This has been a prolonged process, but well worth the wait, I think, you know, I mean, when we all decided to go back to the drawing board and, and come up with something that was very unique and a beautiful entry feature as well as a trail feature, you know, we wanted something that was gonna be impactful. And I think we're ending up with that and it was worth, worth waiting. So, so thank you for your work and I'll start working on my speech for the ribbon cutting.
Wonderful.
All right.
Oh, can we, may I make an informal request that bicycles are encouraged at this ribbon cutting? And perhaps, Mayor, you and I, instead of using scissors, should use our bicycles.
Oh, okay. And just drive into the, right into the ribbon?
It's like a race tape.
Okay, we'll consider it.
All right, wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, we have a presentation. Concrete Paving Association Awards, sounds very sexy.
Very. So we like to share all these awards that we get because obviously without city council letting us do these projects, we would never get these awards. So the first one I wanna talk about is our Seventh Avenue. So obviously, our signature festival street. So the Iowa Concrete Paving Association gave us that award for that project, being the best concrete project for interstate projects greater than fifteen thousand square yards of concrete. The other project is our patching project. And so this past year, that was Twenty-Ninth Avenue and Eighth Avenue. So those two large projects, they also gave us the award for that. So we got to send staff to that conference and come back with more hardware to put on our wall, so.
Thank you.
Just like to share that with everyone else.
That's, it's wonderful that we continue to get recognized for the quality of our work. Do we need a picture or are we, are we good? Oh, all right, yes.
Okay.
Congratulations again on those recognitions. Okay, at this time, we have our first public forum, which is a time for comments from members of the public on any topic listed on the agenda but not associated with the public hearing. If there's anyone here to address council, please come forward. Okay, seeing that no one's coming forward, we will close this section of the meeting and proceed to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through E6, resolutions three one seven nine seven through three one eight one seven.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through E6, resolutions three one seven nine seven through three one eight one seven. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. For the next section of the agenda, I'll turn over the meeting to the deputy mayor pro tem.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Asali's abstention as follows. This will be items B1 through F4, resolutions three one eight one eight through three one eight two four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with Mayor's abstention as follows. Items B1 through F1, resolutions three one eight one eight through three one eight two four. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Asali's abstention, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any opposed? Seeing none? What do you say? Motion carries, sorry. Back to the mayor.
Okay, we're on page six of the agenda. We have a public hearing regarding the 2024 Fifth Avenue Reconstruction Project. We have a presentation from the city engineer.
Yes, sir. So this is our Fifth Avenue Reconstruction. So if you recall, Third Avenue last year, kind of the same thing. So complete reconstruction includes water, sanitary storm sewer. It'll be broken in two years, so we'll do half of it this year, half of it next year. The limits are from first to seventh. And then there's also a few north-south streets that we're actually doing some additional water main work with that, just to tie in some issues where there have had some significant breaks. This also comes from several different funding sources. So it comes from our annual pavement program. It comes from our sanitary sewer program. And obviously, the water department will be paying for their portion of the project as well. We did receive four sealed bids. The low bid came from Rachi Construction at two million ninety-eight thousand one hundred thirteen dollars and ninety-nine cents, which was eighty-seven point four percent the engineer's estimate, as a late start of six, ten, twenty-four, eighty-five working days and five hundred dollars per day in liquidated damages. We are recommending that we proceed with the plans and the bids.
Thank you. At this time, the public hearing is open. If anyone is here to address the council, either in favor or opposition to this measure, please come forward. We will ask the staff, have we received any comments outside the meeting?
We have not.
I have not received any.
Okay, please note that for the record. We'll close the public hearing and proceed to the motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to approve the project calendar regarding the 2024 Fifth Avenue Reconstruction Project as described in resolutions numbers thirty-one, eight twenty-five through thirty-one, eight two six.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the 2024 Fifth Avenue Reconstruction Project, including resolutions three one eight two five through three one eight two six. Discussion?
Just a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Mike, I think on, during your presentation, you had a late start date of a, it was a June date. It doesn't make any difference which it is. Is it conceivable that would start earlier or is, is it gonna be delayed until then because of school?
Yeah, so depending on the contract, so the late start just means they have to start work by that date.
Okay.
Or they start getting charged days by that date. So they can start before that.
All right, thanks.
Okay, that's one. Brandt?
Did I hear you correctly? Did you say that's in two phases?
Yeah, so it'll be a two-year project. So they'll do one part of it this year, another part next year.
Kind of third avenue.
It's, it's a big enough project. Again, we're taking away accesses from people that have direct access, so we don't wanna shut the whole thing down. That's, the residents will be calling you.
His word. Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions from council? All those in favor of approving the motion to approve the project calendar for the 2024 Fifth Avenue Reconstruction Project, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. Next item is a public hearing regarding easements for utility, electric utility with Interstate Power and Light Company with the Albernett Road Extension Project. We have a presentation, Mike?
Yep, so basically, for the Albernett Road project, and those that are not familiar, it's going from Seventh Avenue up Second Street to connect to the Albernett Road section that's been built at Boyson. In preparation for that project, which we will be letting at the earliest February of 2025, there are utilities that need to get out of our way so that we can build our, our street. So Alliant has several locations that they've identified that they need locations for that. They're all in the council packet. They're also highlighted here. Some of them are along properties that we've acquired or through the park, along other streets. And so we wanna give them those easements so that they can get their utilities moved so we can build the road. So we are recommending proceeding with granting them the easement.
Okay, thank you, Mike. This time, the public hearing is open. Anyone is here to address council, either in favor or in opposition to this measure, please come forward at this time. Okay, we'll ask the staff, have we received any comments outside the meeting?
We have not.
None?
I have not received any.
Okay, thank you. Note that for the record, please. We'll close the public hearing and proceed to the resolution.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number three one eight two seven, approving easements for electric utility with Interstate Power and Light Company in association with the Albernett Road Extension Project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three one eight two seven, approving easements for electric utility with Interstate Power and Light Company in association with Albernett Road Extension Project. Discussion?
Question.
Go ahead.
Mike, how fast will Alliant start that, that work?
They're ready to go.
Okay.
We've been negotiating for quite a while with them just because they, getting the plaid's actually drawn up, but they're ready to get out of our way.
Right, okay. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of approving resolution number three one eight two seven, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. For the next item, I'll turn over the meeting to the deputy mayor pro tem.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-four dash zero three, approving a request to rezoned property from U1, Uptown One to PUD, planned unit development for property located at twelve seventy-seven Eighth Avenue, Marion, Iowa. This is the second consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-four dash zero three, approving a request to rezon property from Uptown One to planned unit development for property located at twelve seventy-seven Eighth Avenue, Marion, Iowa. Any discussion?
Yeah, just a question. I saw, Dave, I just wanna benchmark this. As I read the, the packet, there were references to two different numbers of units in, in the development. And my current understanding is that there are fifty-five units planned.
That is correct.
Okay, and obviously, there was a scope reduction, and I, I think we understand that. So I just wanted to benchmark that there, it's fifty-five units. Okay.
All those in favor of approving ordinance number twenty-four dash oh three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries and back to the mayor.
Thank you. All right, the next item is a public forum, which is a time set aside for comments from the public on any topic. Uh, please understand that the City Council will not take action on your comments at this meeting due to the requirements of the open meetings law, but may do so at a future meeting. Anyone here to address council, please come forward. Correct. Uh, if you've, uh, if you've filled out our card, would you please turn that in to the clerk?
I think y'all recognize what this is.
Sir, would you please state your name and address if you can?
My name?
Name and address, please.
I, I didn't hear that I had to.
Oh, okay, well, we, we announced that at the beginning, but, okay.
All right. But do you know what this is? It's a notice of violation, red light. And, uh, I wanted to thank you all for serving. Let me start by actually looking at my notes. We, I do realize that you guys do this as part of your commitment to the community and to the citizens. Thank you for that. So, anyway, what I got was a in the mail here about the fifth of January, was a notice of a violation of a red light at the corner of First Avenue and 100. I think you all know where that is, because I think that's where those light things are. You know that. Is that accurate?
Are you talking about First Avenue and 100 and?
First Avenue and 100, that's right.
The city of Cedar Rapids?
Yes, well, it's actually in Marion.
That's Cedar Rapids. First Avenue. Are you talking about?
Thing it says, Marion.
Is it East Post Road and, and?
No, no.
It's First Avenue and 100.
First Avenue and 100.
That would be within the city limits of Cedar Rapids, is that accurate, Chief?
Wouldn't be yours.
Wouldn't be yours? Well, then why did I get a notice of violation, and why do I send him a hundred bucks? Well, anyway, let me just comment.
Okay.
Okay, on the red light that I got, this, and I'll check it out, because, you know, I already sent him the money, so it really doesn't matter to me. But in any event, um, at that intersection, I was turning right to go to my sister's for a Christmas dinner. So at that light, there was, it's nine-thirty on Christmas Day, nine-thirty in the morning, there's not much traffic. The, the, uh, the picture actually shows that, there's only the two of us in this picture. So in any event, um, I got a ticket for that, turning right on that thing, and I called this number that they have on this back of this thing, which was, uh, three, four, eight, four, four, three, nine, seven, three, one, 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 which I called every day for seven days, and then twice, I called it twice. I called it two days, I called them twice, and I got the same recording, same recording call, and then I, they, sure, they called me back, but what am I supposed to do? Sit around home and wait for them to call me? I don't think that you would do that, so I didn't do that. Where am I, I at on my five minutes? Do we know?
You have about one minute and forty seconds.
Okay, in any event, um, I called them, I got no answer, they said, so I called the Marion Police Department, Rhonda answered the phone. Rhonda tried to help me, but she didn't know who would do the administrative review. Well, hmm, okay, so I just waited to, to see if they would do anything. Well, Rhonda assured me that they would look into it, and responded, did not know who was to look into it. So I finally called the answering machine and told them not to call me anymore, call me back if they could not confirm the, the reception of the request. Well, I never got another call from them. So I sent in a second re- request for a, an administrative review, and I sent the hundred dollars yesterday. But if I were negotiating, renegotiating with that company, I would give them a buck for what they get, for what they did. They did nothing to me. So anyway, um, I got thirty seconds left, and that's it. Thank you again, you've heard my, I'm, I'm, first of all, really, the officer who did this, who, who sent me the, who sent this thing, uh, you know, he, he could have had a little more forgiveness and deep, deep into that. Because there was absolutely nobody, and I was turning right, and the, everybody else was turning left on the, that intersection, so it wasn't a light, there was, uh, you know, the, they're not gonna be an accident. But I still understand that I didn't stop at, at a red light. So I understand that. I already sent him the money, it's not a big deal. Nonetheless, okay, I'm over, I'm over, over limit, sorry, thank you for serving.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, but like I said, you're not getting what you paid for, for the, the dollar, and I was pissed because it's Sunday, Sunday morning on Christmas Day, for God's sakes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else who's here to address council, please come forward at this time? Are you here to address council? Could, you could do it afterwards, yeah. If you would just come forward and state your name and address, and then you can fill out the card afterwards, thank you.
My name's Jennifer Filter, I live at 3600 Willowood Avenue in Marion. And then, would you prefer me to fill out the form and then turn it in?
Oh, you can do it afterwards, that's fine.
Um, I'm a person who's trying to gain understanding of how property taxes work. Um, my family and I, family and I recently moved to Marion just a year and a half ago. And I'm really shocked by how high our property taxes are. And I'm a stay-at-home mom because I'm putting my children first, so any taxes we pay is very burdensome. And I noticed on our taxes, forty-five percent of ours goes to the Lynn Mar School District, and it seems like a large amount. So I'm trying to gain understanding, I've been calling different people in government offices, trying to research on the internet, how do property taxes work, and why are they that high? And I just feel like I'm at a loss of trying to find that information and gain the understanding, and then how to advocate for lower property taxes.
Sure, that's, um, if you would stick around afterwards, we can talk and, um, we'll get you to the right people who can make sure that it's explained to you, and that you have, you, you have the information you need.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else here to address council, please come forward? Okay, we'll close that part of the meeting and proceed to council comments. Mr. Jensen?
Your Honor, just a quick comment to follow up on the firefighter, uh, Michael, uh, being pinned tonight. Um, that's always a great experience to see that happen, and I think you might be right. Uh, the best fire department in the state of Iowa, which isn't to say, you know, about, take anything away from PD, by the way.
Yeah. I just thought since they were all in the room, we would, you know, recognize them for their good work. Okay, well, thanks everyone for all your great work, and, um, reminder that the State of the City is, State of the City presentation is at eleven-thirty on March 5th at the Radisson. And everyone is welcome, and it should be a good celebration of all our successes and where our city's headed. And then we have the, um, groundbreaking for the plaza coming up also, uh, in March, is that the twenty-eighth, correct? On the twenty-eighth, that's at four o'clock, and, um, the entire community is invited to join us for that and celebrate the beginning of a really, game-changing project for our city, and something we should all be proud of. Um, and, uh, it's, uh, the fun part about what we have been accomplishing in the last few years is that it's, it's all, um, insignificant, and moving the, the city forward, uh, immensely, and it's, it's all, they're all projects we can really be proud of, and point two is, truly reaching higher and truly doing the best for the community, and truly making Marion a standout community across the state. And we should all be proud of that, and I would just want to, um, thank everyone for all your hard work, and keep going. We shouldn't let, rest on our achievements, we have a lot more to do, we have a lot more we can do. And, uh, whenever we think we've reached our potential, there's more we can do to exceed it, and, uh, take one, one more step to, to do better for our community. Thank you all. We'll see you.